...department, or with their sheriff's department or animal services they were taken to the citizens and tried to save their lives for. And we know much for God, but actually they could do that, or this may relate to one in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first board meeting for the Manhattan Medical Fund Financial Report. We have a few items for the board to consider. Back in budget, the board approved the purchase of some bleachers for the South Albans and T-Ball Fields. Jason Sawyer, our rate director, has done some research and got three quotes. He handed me the best price, best quality quote is with the SN Sports for four sets of bleachers for total with tax of seventy-eight, sixty-two, fourteen. That includes taxes of about six hundred and fifty dollars, which we get back from the state, so the total of the county would expend would be seventy-one hundred and eighty dollars. So it's a little bit lower. That is a total per set of seventeen hundred and ninety-five dollars. The other quotes he received were twenty-two oh nine per set. I did not see the name of the company, apologize. And then one, Anthem Sports was for eighteen hundred and ninety per set. And then there was another more single rail bleachers with the same company for twelve hundred and forty, but they're not as good quality. So I see that here the board still is charged to make this purchase and so the board wants to approve it.
I'll make a motion as long as it's good quality, not the low.
Right.
Not the low one, and we go with the lowest being.
Second.
I did want to give you just a note that on cardiac monitors, the board requested my handwriting to get some trading notes. He has not received others yet, so I think that will be the next board meeting. And I just received a phone call from the health director that one of the HVAC units outside the health department is, can either be repaired or placed. To repair it would be twenty-four hundred and ten dollars with a twelve months warranty. To replace it would be thirty-seven hundred and twenty dollars with a five year warranty, that's for the Habley, that's who I think installed and has been servicing our unit at the health department. There's also a diaphragm that's bad, that this is another compressor, it's going to require a repair of three hundred, two to three hundred dollars. This is on another compressor outside.
Wish God bought them one of those and slept seven. I'll make a motion to get them out of here.
They will be replacing the unit.
Second.
I will call her in the morning later and know. Just a couple more items. Had some conversation with Jan Garrison with United Community Bank, Community Investment, Reinvestment Section. She did say she's still planning to come and see us. She also had been in touch with the governor's office and he's interested in coming as well. She wanted to know some potential dates and I said, "Well, we'll be on his timetable, I'm sure." So she's supposed to get back with me and just to report on that. And then I'm sure Mr. Cable is going to report on this as well, that we did get the Fort Hill plant inventory and I do have a, it's a handwriting list at this point of where we triaged the inventory. We have, we had several items that were totally destroyed and not trashed, basically not salvageable. But I made a list up, I have a list of things that we could eventually surplus and sell, and a potential list of key, so I'm going to have it here tonight, you guys will look at it, I'm sleeping here, I will take it. And then I also have a signature card, the board about to show, um, that I'm about to go through, opening the federal bank account for the sheriff, and I have to report that we are getting some federal bank surplus, I don't know what exactly what they call it, where they would hurt money back to the county. And so I just need the board to get their signatures on the signature card, and then I will catch Mr. Mills' ass before he lays and have him sign on the signature card as well. In fact, I'll have him sign first, and then that way, that's me. That's all.
That all? Over there.
Yeah.
some raises with the, the team's in office. And if you, if you looked at it, if you expected this, they, the way, the way that you've approved for us to go by. And the first question, you know, if you've asked some questions about Captain David here, he can answer any questions that you have about the way that they have been on the budget, like we stayed in the budget last year. Well, I only have a little bit to do with the budget last year, to certain people, when I'm out of state, I try to, and we still stay with ten of the budgets made locally than the budget we set up last year. And originally for the, trying to help some of the employees stay with us, and we've trained them, we've, you know, got a lot of money invested, having to train, trying to keep them to stay here, as you well know, we're losing employees every day. I've lost four this week to different counties, to different, you know, just to try, you know, and I'm just trying to keep them around here, give them a little bit of senior do say, and help them out, and all kinds of, pay for struggle. And it's, it was in the way, about glad that I could have kept Captain David here, he can answer any questions he has in the way. And Captain David has some paperwork, you know, you'd like to bring your files over and you all to look at, so I might have to let him understand.
Did they get the call now that you made it?
Uh, they should figure maybe the end of the month.
But they are, they're.
They've got them, they just waiting on some paperwork, they should figure the end of the month or something.
Or?
Uh, two new ones, and I'm not sure about the, the.
Rick, we're ready for you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, it's good to be here in Robbinsville, it's been several years, brought my family on vacation up to the Montana Village on two different occasions, I think three years apart, when they were small, and I buy a little love, spend the next few days up there. So we're going to have a reunion up here again, so it's good to be here in Robbinsville tonight, where you're at, and thank you each of you, and Honorable Chairman and Commissioners for placing this home near agenda tonight. And this is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties to vote yes to proudly and promptly display our U.S. motto, "In God We Trust, In and On The Government Of Buildings." My name is Rick Lanier, and I'm co-founder and vice-chairman of the U.S. Motto Action Committee. I served as county commissioner in Davidson County in Lexington from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two, and in two thousand and two, led the board commissioners to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" on the exterior of the governmental center. Soon after that, several surrounding cities and counties joined us and would be saying. And we formed the U.S. Motto Action Committee for the sole purpose of promoting patriotism by encouraging elected officials like you to vote yes to display "In God We Trust," In and On The Government Of Buildings. Displaying the motto gives ceremony of honor, it's a public occasion, it expresses confidence in our society. These words have been used on our U.S. currency since eighteen sixty-four, and this inspiring slogan is a grade above the entrance of the U.S. Senate Chamber, as well as above the Speaker's seat in the U.S. House of Representatives. In nineteen, on July thirtieth, nineteen fifty-six, during the quiet the eyes of the prior administration, the U.S. Congress adopted "In God We Trust" as an official national motto of the United States of America. Thus, displaying the motto is a legal right protected by our First Amendment. On November the first, two thousand and eleven, the U.S. House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly, three hundred and ninety-six to nine to reaffirm "In God We Trust" as our nation's motto. Congressman Randy Forbes of Virginia sponsored the resolution in part because some have mistakenly stated that "Deep Forests Ull" is our national motto. Most importantly, the resolution specifically encourages the placement of the motto "In and On All Government Of Buildings" from courthouse to school classrooms. A recent survey shows that eighty-seven percent of all Americans still support this play of our national motto and right to show. This is our nation's identity. In times of both war and peace, these words have been a profound source of strength and guidance to many generations of Americans. As a grassroots patriotic movement, the U.S. Motto Action Committee stands on solid legal ground. Since Davidson County made the way, not one legal challenge has been raised against any city or county that has voted to adopt this resolution and display the motto. And I'll read those quickly. Alamance County, Alexander County, Ash County, Avery County, Brunswick County, Burke County, Colquitt County, Casper County, Cleveland County, Davidson County, Davie County, Gaskin County, Ira County, Lee County, Lincoln County, McDowell County, Mitchell County, Moore County, Montgomery County, Pender County, Polk County, Randolph County, Robeson County, Cherokee County, Rowan County, Rutherford County, Stanley County, Stokes County, Surrey County, Watauga County, Wilkes County, Union County, Yacke County, Cherokee County, Bellville Town Hall, Chinatown Road Town Hall, Denton Town Hall, Harmony Town Hall, Kings Mountain City Hall, Latamo Town Hall, Madison Town Hall, Mayo downtown Hall, Midway Town Hall, Robins Town Hall, Stonewall Town Hall, Thomasville City Hall, Trinity City Hall, Trautland City Hall, Wallace Town Hall, Wahlburg Town Hall, and just this week, Rhode Island Town Hall and Elkhart Town Hall. And all total, I think we have, I count those, fifty-one, fifty-two, from Mr. Powell's approach, to display the motto, thirty-four of those are counties. And we are, are, got a few more in western Florida states that we're heading, and so far, we're not going to turn it down to any county. This effort is totally legal, there's nothing to challenge, a hundred percent of the cost comes from private donations, it's not ten out of county offers in tax dollars. And how often you get something offered at this level, free charge by my name, and glad for that. And we're pleased to have so many people welcome, and I think, I think it has a lot to do with the time that they're bringing, the county leaders are seeing the need to welcome this idea, to put "In God We Trust" on the building. Displaying the motto on the exterior of the building, and I, I say this on occasion, I feel like it's appropriate here, putting it on a, on a building or in a chamber does not, it, it mean that folks walking into order are going to come over, God only, that more doesn't mean that you're always going to make a God of decision, but the founding fathers of the Near Band, just as you and I, they felt the importance of the voting "In God We Trust," they live and see what's made. And hopefully it helps us all remember that the God of the founding fathers, that's what's all about, Christian heritage of the country. Elected officials like you are surely committed to our, our custard's heritage and what was found though by making these decisions. And I look forward to hearing a yes vote tonight, and to do that, we'll just look right on and give this motto a question on the cell. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have this night.
I'll make a motion to adopt this, right?
Second.
Thank you all, thank you all. Now, just to let you know, a lot of folks ask questions, you know, where does it come from? We, we have folks all across the state that are willing to give, to help on this, but what we do, we first reach out to the community and the county where we go, so that they can take ownership, so if you, if you all vote for visiting churches, what have you, who would like to be a part of this, I'll be glad to leave some extra boosters if you like, and maybe you all know some, yeah. Why we won't take, I tell you this, while we won't take it from county dollars, we will take it from county officials. I mean, so I can tell you that, that, now you all are voting.
What is the cost?
Uh, well, what, based on what, if you, if you go with what was proposed here on the town hall and, and inside the chambers here, this is just a test, uh, based on the experience we've had in the past, I would say you look at somewhere between fourteen to eighteen hundred dollars total cost for everything. And, and I'm probably going to give you a little hindsight to make sure that I don't get kicked, sit the tank flat, or something, you know. It's probably coming from the list, and I'd say you put a quarter to ten hundred dollars. Rather than a big ten hundred dollars, I would say be, be a pretty close to it. So, so thank you all for your vote, and, and I will leave the table for you, it's okay with the clerk over there. We will, we will head on down to the five town villages, it's good to get rid of the group of government about the end of the night. Thank you all for your vote.
I appreciate you.
Got it.
I think great, sir.
The gentleman's not here tonight. She did sing out a request for some preliminary engineering services. There were four companies that she contacted, Mr. McGill and Sessions, Wood Company, D King, and Steelwell Engineering. There was one response to the need for preliminary engineering services on the Seabee Waterline and Silverline Extension Project, and it was submitted by McGill and Sessions. So, we're here, there's the folks, and I'll be more, I should come on that, so we want to hear from you all, so we can go ahead and get, we need a load on that.
I, I need to go ahead and probably hear you all, so we can get, in case we're going to start especially trying to skip what is out, we need to discover.
Well, I'm not really over your life, but I say we have a new gentleman, this is your.
And now we're live.
And, he ready to meet you. And he's all about to make your own show of hand, but I, I think he'll go with, yeah, I've had some bad taste in your mouth with, with my crack, and well, you done, I think you done half, you're not part of them all, so I think I can do it. I'll make a motion to go with, yeah, the sessions.
You see, okay. Go, uh, your, your figure that out.
Okay, second.
As our county manager said, I'm Terry Sessions, and I am a part-time resident of Gray County. And I am here to do something that as a public servant, before I retired, I had thirty-one years in with the state of North Carolina, and I know that, at least in my experience, we didn't have too many people come forward to say thank you, and that's what I have come to do this year, is to thank you. Now, I don't want anybody in here thinking I'm foolish enough to thank you for a tax increase, because I like my money in my pocket better than yours, but I also understand that those things have to happen, and I hope to thank you, first of all, for the compassion that you have shown throughout this recession that we're just now coming out of. While many counties did what you did, they had compassion, not all, not all counties did, and so I want to thank you for that, because that means that people like your share stevens and those others don't get paid increases. And so they're serving literally out of goodness of their hearts when they don't want to see a pay increase. And I know from my personal experience here in Gray County, that you have a fine staff. Anytime that I've had a question, especially about taxes, but in all aspects, even if that person could not tell me what I wanted to hear, they were at least nice about it. So I thank, I thank you for that and your leadership, because it all comes back to the folks sitting around this table and what your expectations are. Now, one of the things that, that I would like to thank you about in terms of this latest tax increase, is that you are still keeping it at a minimal level. As I said, I'm a part-time resident in Gray County, which means I'm also a part-time resident in Johnston County, in Blue Rock, and I own property in Vance County. And I can tell you that the tax increase that we received this year did not even bring me close to what I'm paying in Johnston County. Currently, your tax rate is point five eight five per hundred dollars. In Johnston County, we pay point seven eight per hundred dollars, so that's almost twenty cents more per hundred than what we're paying. And then on top of that, I have my city taxes to pay, and the city taxes are point five seven. So as you can see, we do math, it's quite a bit, and so, so I applaud you for taking the money that you do collect and being so frugally responsible with the money that we give you. And so I just thank you for that, and I didn't want to go on record as saying, I hope we don't have another one next year, but you do, I'm very responsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Total releases were six hundred and eight ninety dollars and thirty-one cents, and discoveries totaled eight thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
I'll make a motion to meet yourself. If you mind me, I don't know.
All right. Southwest meeting, ninety-eight, advisory meeting, the rear foreman to keep Ellis with that. Southwest, we're trying to see the tar field, delegate ultimate, rear foreman of Nancy Norcross.
So moved.
Is she on?
Yes, she has not told me that she did.
All right. We received the RFQs back on the engineering and project management services for the park behind Stanley, two firms, we got responses, we got responses from McGill and Associates, and we also got responses from Equinox, Amy Cable scored, the proposals, I scored the proposals, and Jesse Sawyer scored the proposals, they were all fairly close in, in the scoring, actually they were pretty close. And the Equinox, the final score came out with Equinox at sixty-seven, one, three, three, and McGill Associates at fifty-five, one, six, six. Biggest difference was, I guess, the variance, the average, where is it?
Um, I can't understand that, you accept, are you?
Second.
Next discussion items, there was a circumstance that came up a few weeks ago, whenever the Taxation Service Office was out getting information on the houseboats and floating houses in the lake, and it's a, there was a- And it's a, there was a reimbursement, resubmit back into the administrative office for fuel and those costs. And both, but fuel was covered. I don't want to discuss this with the board and see if you wanted to change that because we had not made any prior arrangements.
Back in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight, before the houseboats was actually scheduled for two thousand, the rebound, it was made a decision that if we had to rein or reimburse anybody at that time, the county would take care of that, be able to give these houseboats under control and be able to get them on the plate so we could be taxed. And at that time, the board agreed to take and reimburse the county employee if they had to use their vote for any way to be able to assess this. Because at the time, it was at the wintertime when they had to go actually when the lake was down. Sometimes they had to go down to the service to get their stuff.
Okay.
So that was, that was in ninety-eight. I was on board at the time.
So it was a reimbursement fee or any sort of random thing, anything like that? I, I didn't know, I didn't have a policy on bringing.
Because that was one of the things was because it was an asset to the county and that was the first time they were actually physically measured and accounted for. And that was one of the things that we wanted to see the tribe to make, make it happen.
We also need a re-augury through the board to.
Of course, the board can, so, you know, we act as somebody that can have pre-augury. And if it gets brought to the board, because I can approve and the board can vote and say it's okay to pack. So it's, it's, yeah. We have to, we need to make a motion to that to get them through.
Have you done anything else you've got going to do?
Sorry. It would be, the cure was too variable and the on-ramp was a complicated one.
I like the motion with you.
Right, what's the answer?
Thank you for the eight hour. It's a nice trip.
Five years. There's been a lot of changes on the houseboats. There's been a lot of changes on the houseboats.
Oh, yes.
Herman provided me with a copy of all of the modifications of the other things today. There's a lot of things you have to.
You didn't turn the page for me, did you?
I was just asking why I didn't take my fish and go to it. I said, I'm sorry, I'm on county. I don't do that. And I didn't, I swear I didn't.
I'll have to talk to Jerry and find out. See if he might have. I've asked Jerry to see if, see if he had any fish cooking.
Next, on the discussion items, I don't think I have a copy, but there's a poll on the weekend senior cook being able to also perform duties in the off hours and transit to be a drive, or to be scheduled to drive. That was a poll that was done, I think, on Thursday, what day was that? We'll come back on. We'll go back on the way down. Yeah. But anyway, it was first by the board and just to get that.
Can I make a motion? Oh, we approve.
Second.
I have one item for new business. I've been in some discussion with a uniform company that stopped in and we did a review of our current status with the service that we're being provided with our current uniform service for sanitation as well as vehicle maintenance. Current rate that we're paying is around a hundred forty dollars a week for uniforms. The new provider offers a service at less than eighty dollars a week. It's a company around five thousand dollars a year. I contacted our current service provider, they were not willing to meet us at that level. So they, we've been with them for about fifteen years. They've not done any more camera view than about time. And so I would like to proceed and let me to make the change to satisfy you. The company is Universe. The office is located in Lake.
What's the name of the land here?
Universe.
I said, we do, we do a motion to know what to change for.
Okay.
Second.
And what I have.
When were we in the, Tiscore?
Tiscore, yes, thank you. We have been looking into several minutes lately, looking to the synthetic cover. That came in, three courts, that came in at twenty-four thousand dollars per court, which is twenty-four point eight thousand dollars per court. So that was way outside the range of what we had appropriated, but because we can with three courts over there. We've also looked at some other options with, with the repay and some of the things that they did across the area where they did their courts. They, they were very similar, but they basically did a lot of that work themselves and they're pretty much all Jason. If they had to do it over again, by the time they did it themselves, they'd have been better off to get someone to do what they're doing in there because it wasn't possible. He's got the individual who resurfaced the tennis courts over at Carkey coming out to see him, basically have developed a more cost effective solution and hoping for now I'll have some more information on that coming very, very soon. So we're, we're digging and looking, trying to find a very reasonable solution that's in the direction of what we need to do over there, but at the same time, stay relatively close to what we appropriated for capital projects and much in the future.
The lights, one of the lights that we have forced to provide to get the best thing. A good job.
I'll throw you my bridge out to the rest of the school on the flank. There are also, you know, somebody that's tried to research and then they may know that in what, and if they've already gone out there with a hundred.
What it was.
I don't know who, who it was.
Get another.
A lot of those synthetics are similar to that. It's, it's one.
The brothers don't play a lot.
Oh, I, I have no idea. The shooting range is, is moving on to a four engagement shooting team and then he works with shooting team there. He's got some information he's been bringing by with the NRA that's coming up in Cherokee, I think, this month with some implications. We're seeking around for the NRA to be able to help develop that out there.
Of course, I'm excited.
We're looking at the fire break site.
Really, the fire break site's need to do, push out.
Yes, sir.
About two, three thousand a year.
Absolutely. And you have, I'm planning to get the dry liquid sanitation up there very quick, get some loose sand, pull it down so we can get some silences to get that drop, new driveway approved.
The far end is pretty good. I believe I did maybe for ten loads, maybe eleven up there. And I just had to make them, turn the truck from there back to track and make a path to there, we can get to there because the leak is over the truck.
Okay.
And then push out. And that way he can have a better outlook at it. And I think everything that I did up there can be, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Clean, clean, that good. Get the kids some water. Do something besides, you know, the streets.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. That's, that's good. I will wait.
We talked about them several times and we talked about the fence leaves and then I noticed he mentioned like a second shift. Have we done, made any other decisions on that?
I, I've talked to the director, Donna, about, you know, a secondary ship and, you know, we recently hired another staff member for sanitation. Ultimately, he's trying, he can't really figure out a way to get that late ship running in order to do that late pickup based on his current staff. You know, I see a lot of things that have failed recently and we've been down trucking. We've gone down to Mack truck, we may not be on two trucks, try to, been down, we've got four trucks on the road. We've got one being prepared to refill because we didn't want to buy a new one considering conditions of paddle, the newer trucks. And the other has been in the shop quite frequently. We finally reached out, backed out to Orwell Equipment. They actually came and got a truck and were trying to seek some reimbursement for mine and had figured out what the actual problem was and that's been refined.
Have you got an idea what the policy was on that?
Not right now, but I'll tell you, they tried to find out when that truck was due. He said that they, he had it on their back. Yes, sir. We're still working on that, but he's, so.
Yeah, it's unreal how moving them, where they can get by, where they can pile them, brush up the end. They've got the sweet water for, well, they can finally get in the, the sweet water, but down Buffalo, they can get, well, they've got a set of, they can get in there to, to brush. And so, and I, this weekend, I checked that one open and they were never shaved and they have been a long time. They need mowed. They need the, the vines cut off, the things, they need the fence. I worked on this for a long time and it's still, I know we've done, the fire clean has fixed, these fences need fixed. A lot of it is probably the garbage trucks back there. A lot of it is probably this to be, the green mean.
That's what happened.
Yeah, they tried to push that can or two of them, the fence, but they could be a lot of straightened in. I know we had a fire queen look at them, he wouldn't even tackle them. If we just straighten some of them, then what you need, even most of the plastic, it might make a lot of difference because you're getting safer.
I can have a kids company, I'm not taking a lot.
I understand. It's ridiculous. Yeah, I already, I forgot it was way, I remember anything that he needs to get, he wouldn't even touch him and he would keep careful of taking it. Like back then, over. It was just extremely, it's simply wasn't easy. But they can't be straightened, trees cut out of them, bushes cut out of them, drives put around them, only inside, I'm not, I'm not, you know, on the outside.
My coles off and the garbage kind of slowed down. Donnie didn't lay down more than three times and couldn't see what we're doing, didn't take it.
Grab your. So I'm waiting, I'm tired of them, I'm gonna go sleep with her one night. If I'm not gonna, lot to do when I get back to town.
All right.
I have no experience to begin. You don't struggle.
Should probably announce, we, we did hear some really good news yesterday. The county did not, I've got to give more details. And, but we were notified that we did receive three point four million dollar grant for new nine one one communication center. So this is a, a really, really big deal. There were several counties in North Carolina that applied for this facility. We were one of only three that were recipients of this grant.
You're speaking to nine one one.
What are you talking about? Don't you mean from words, I hear?
Building a new standalone, um, gas center, well, one time. State law changed and they, they, the law that came up is requiring counties to have nine one one center backups, meaning we would have to be in agreement with another county or another two, of the two counties, that if, if our nine one one center wants to go down, their nine one one center wants to go down, we would have an interlocal agreement where we can pick up their service and pick up their cops if it's a, it's a level of redundancy and safety for the citizens. It's called a B C. At some point, and it got laid back out to two thousand seventeen, I believe, legislative this year, but eventually that's going to be a law. And what's going to happen is that all of these, these county operations are going to have to have same technology until they're going to have to be able to communicate and they're going to have to be in our name. That's very, very expensive. Most of this money is granted probably to go to the technology that needs to go into the center in order to provide the necessary backup. This is going to be helped like tremendously since I was having to build this type of system on our own one day. Now, this, you know, these grants are almost unheard of. We've got the ability to use these nine one one rights to build it so that on our own we can go. Is it good, honey?
Did there was some discussion on the increase, over three hundred percent increase in minerals? And are we going to look in to see if we can get better priority at turning that up?
I, I have not. We also are still waiting on information, it's already a month or something.
Any good news from around?
They took a break.
No, no, I mean, the D O T.
Oh, the D O T, oh. They went home today, every last week. Stopped believing a little bit. The, the D O T trip went very, very well. The quarter that they have emergency was recombined. That project is going back into development. Gray County is a part of that process which we're not for. And by that, I mean, we're at the table whenever there's a meeting in Raleigh on that project and they're, they are, our input is being weighed in decisions that are being made. And so the will to turn on that, looks like the progress has been made and we're, we're certainly going to be a part of that. Perhaps even some of these emergency meetings will be held here in Gray County. And I would stress the importance of that and necessary action at times. So I request. stress the importance of that and necessary action at times. So, our request is to be there to escalate if our issues can't be resolved within that group, to be the ones to be able to take it to the next level to get those issues resolved. That's it.
We need additional questions?
They're fine. Yes, absolutely. Excited, thanks for that.